Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Waverne City Council held here at the council chambers at 5:00 PM, Monday, August 17th, 2020. Tonight, Mr. Richards is absent. We have lots of, a very large agenda here tonight, as we've got, we've only done one meeting in July and one meeting in August. We're winding down also coming towards the election, November 9th. So this is the fourth last one of the whole four years of council that we've had this year. We welcome tonight Janine Fletcher from our new planning and development person. She has come to us from out of Ontario. We'd like to welcome her here tonight, and we'll probably be seeing some of her and speaking a little bit later on. For now, we wish to start off with approval of the minutes. Regular council meeting and strategic planning priorities meeting held July 20th, 2020, if you would please.
I'll move that, Your Worship.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
All in favor? Carry unanimously. Additions to the agenda, council? Seeing none, Mr. Warren?
Your Worship, there's no additions from administration tonight. Thank you.
Moving forward, there's no public hearings and notices, no delegations, proclamations, or petitions. We have reports of the standing committees. Mr. Van Betje will give the shortened version of the police commission.
Thank you, Your Worship. A regular meeting of the Waverne Police Commission held in the administrative boardroom at 4:00 PM Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. There was no new correspondence. First item was the mayor's report. June 2020 in comparison to June 2019, crimes against persons were four in 2019, five in 2020. Property crimes increased from 35 in 2019 to 37 in 2020. June criminal code violations increased from zero in 2019 to four in 2020. And criminal code violations decreased totally from 117 to 104. And calls for service decreased from 609 to 534. Chief Blunden advised the trends upward in property crimes as our break and enters, theft under 5,000, and CDSA, which is Controlled Drug and Substance Act. The council payable report, Chief Blunden provided the council payable received report for June 2020. CSO report for June 2020, Chief Blunden provided the report for June advising the CSO is busy, but as schools are closed, she is finding lots of other work. The CSO is assisting officers where she can and will be assisting with the Jump Start Bike Rodeo to be held in August. Chief Blunden provided a bylaw officer report and advised a bylaw officer is busy with summer issues, messy yards, et cetera. Chief Blunden then provided a budget report year-to-date up to July 3rd, 2020. These reports were all received and accepted as presented. The board went into closed session at 4:45, and when completed, the meeting was adjourned.
Any questions? I believe the Jump Start Bike Rodeo was a success on the weekend. They had over 60 registered, and I believe they gave away some, Jump Start gave away something like 20 bikes to children of need if you were there. So it was a very well-done one. So the newspaper wants to talk about that, media wants to talk about that, to contact our bylaw enforcement officer. Moving forward, consent agenda. Water treatment plant and building department report, do you have a motion to accept?
Your Worship, I can make a motion that the following items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented. The water treatment plant report for July and the building department report for July.
Do you have a second?
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Carry unanimously. Motions, council payable? Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Worship, I'm pleased to make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $2,136,000, let me try that again, $2,136,052 from July 17th to August 13th, 2020 be approved.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Carry unanimously. The audited financial statements and public accounts. Laura?
Hi. So the city of Waverne's 2019 financials have been audited by Grant Thornton, and they have provided their opinion on the audited financials, and this year they're giving us a qualified opinion. This is based on the city offers an employee benefit that provides a non-accumulating, non-investing sick leave. So management has decided that rather than recording the estimate of what the accrual would be, that we would rather have the qualified opinion, as this is a departure from the Canadian public sector accounting standards. So it was also advised by Grant Thornton that if we didn't want to put this liability on our books, to do the qualified opinion. So it's of our opinion to go this route, and we're going to obtain an actuary report for next year to accrue whatever that comes on the report, because we figure that it will be substantially lower than what the calculation is today. So in 2019, our budget revenue was $20,933,000, and our actual was $20,931,000, so it's only a difference of $2,000. Our expenses, we budgeted for $26,671, and our actual is $29,640, so there's a difference of just under $3 million. This is mostly due to, we don't budget for amortization, and amortization expense is 2.7 million. So, because we, when we budget, we budget based on a cash basis, not on an accrual basis, which our financials are based on. We also budgeted grants of 3.5 million, and our actual was 4.8 million, so we received 1.2 above what we had budgeted for. So that was due to additional federal gas tax funding and some additional money that we received in the CWWF, the Canadian wastewater funding grant. So other areas to highlight would be our cash and investments. We saw a decrease of 16.6 million, and that was to fund the WRCC and the pension transfer to MAP. I'll highlight that later. Our capital assets increased by 19.5 million. 1.8 million of this was just a reclass of land inventory into a land asset that was advised by the auditors. So our increase was just under 18 million. Our reserves, they decreased by 18, just under 18.5 million, and that would be due to the WRCC construction, the pension transfer, the water treatment plant reservoir being built, and the landfill upgrades. So in, on January 1st of 2019, all the members of the city of Waverne Pension Plan were transferred over to the MAP Pension Plan. So that, that plan that the city of Waverne had was totally wound up in 2019. Also, so the hospital levy, we've collected 5.6 million of that, and the, or the committed amount is 6 million. So at December 31st, our assets were 25.9 million, liabilities were 4.3. Total net financial assets were 21.6 million, and our non-financial assets, which include the tangible capital assets, are prepaid charges, stock inventory, that was 94 million. So our accumulated surplus is 116,275, and last year it was 120,147. So the decrease is mostly due to just the construction that we've seen going on. That's kind of the highlights of our financials. The financials will be available on our website along with the public accounts. I'll have to get final drafts, as the ones we currently have are still in draft format, but once we get finals from Grant Thornton, they will be available.
Questions? Mr. Reeder?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion that the 2019 audited financial statements and 2019 public accounts for the city of Waverne be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Call the question. All in favor? The next one, introduction bylaws. We have a bylaw, 2020-3409, Water Works Bylaw Amendment, which basically is the, Mr. Warren, if you refresh the memory, please, or engineer.
Yes, we'll be, I have a presentation to review both the Water Works and this sewer bylaw rate review, so.
Go ahead.
So we're just going to start off with a couple, a few definitions here. Customers, so constant unit charge, this is a uniform amount, per unit of water used per billing period. We have a base charge, which applies to all users. It's a flat charge that's charged each billing cycle. Service connection repair fund. So this fee is based on the size of your water service and is charged to city of Waverne user water bills. It costs, it covers the cost of maintenance and replacement of existing water and sewer service connections. And then we have an environmental fee and a landfill decommissioning fee. So the environmental one is, helps us protect and improve our water and air quality, stormwater pollution, as well as ensure we're in compliance with all the regulations. And this is a flat fee rate for each utility customer, as well as the same thing for the landfill decommissioning fee. It is a flat rate for each utility customer regardless of their water use, property value, or type of account. So just to go through water usage, so this table shows the city of Waverne water usage data from June 1st, 2014 to May 31st, 2019. So the reason we're going from June to May is this is due to when we did our water, our water meter replacement, so this gives us a more accurate review of that. As you can see, consumption has gone down. We believe this is due to more accuracy in our meters, as well as during some of this time period, we did have a water conservation bylaw come in and out. So we had one from May 2014, 2016, to April 24th, 2017, and then it was implemented again in May 14th, 2018, and it currently still is in use or in effect. So as you can see, a number of users have stayed pretty consistent, but yet we are seeing a decrease in consumption of water. So just to go over a bit about our utility rates, so they're designed to cover the operations. This includes treatment, storage, and distribution, and capital projects related to water quality and regulatory requirements. So all operations for utilities are funded through utility fees and utility grants. Taxation does not contribute to the cost of utilities. The water and wastewater service charges are based on water meter. So the water, wastewater and infrastructure volumetric charges are based on consumption. The base charge is to ensure certain minimum revenue to deliver the service. Our current water and sewer rates were as, sorry, so the water rate was effective January 1st, 2016, and it is 0.95 per cubic meter. And then rural customers, so this would be the Waverne Utility Board and North Waverne would see 1.7 times that. And then for the sewer rates, they came in effect in 2013, January 1st, and they're 0.665 per cubic meter. And then once again, the rural customers, which would be North Waverne, they see 1.75 times that. So just to give you guys an idea of kind of the current billing, so this kind of just goes over what users would see, and it's split up by city of Waverne, Waverne Utility Board, and North Waverne. So as you can see, the users, they obviously depend on the size of meter. But just to give you an idea, if you were to go based on a 15 cube usage, a city of Waverne user would see anything from about $72 to 325-ish. And then Waverne Utility Board, they're about $40, and North Waverne is about $68. So that's kind of what our current billing would show. So just to give you an idea of some of the things we've done in the past few years, we've seen a lot of water trunk mains being replaced, and this is now becoming an annual program where we tend to be doing one a year. And as you can see, not only have we done a few, but we also have more coming up in the years to come. We've also done the water meters, so we replaced them in 2018, and that was a $2.2 million project. And then the big one is the larger reservoir at the water treatment plant, as well as a bunch of upgrades at the First Avenue Reservoir. So you're looking at, between those projects, you're looking at about $20 million with all the upgrades. And then, yeah, we obviously have a lot more things to be done. More on the sewer side, you can see we've got some new mains, a sewer truck replacement, and then some more trunk mains, as well as we do have some lift stations to upgrade that are in need of that. So you're seeing a few $2 million projects in there, as well as we're looking at some bigger $1 million for the lift stations coming up. So just to show the utility finances, so as you can see, operating 2017, 2018, 2019, we're just net in 2017, and then we plan to be on a net side in 2020, but both 2018 and 2019 saw loss. As well as on the capital side, as you can see, we have been investing quite a bit into our infrastructure and doing a lot of expansions and repairs, so it is definitely, in 2018, you saw 3.6 million loss, as well as 2.2 in 2019, and then 1.4 is expected in 2020. So just to give you an idea, we are operating out of our reserve account right now. So in 2017, our ending balance of reserves was 8.8 million, and by the end of this year, our reserve balance is going to be 1.9 million. And this is obviously due to all the infrastructure upgrades. So we are proposing to increase the rates, and this would be effective January 1st, 2021. So for 2021, we are looking at going up to 1.1 per cubic meter for water. Then we would see another increase in 2022, up to 1.2 per cubic meter. And then in 2023, we would look at another increase, up to 1.3 per cubic meter. We're also looking at that for the sewer rates. Once again, it would be 2021, January 1st effective, to go to 0.77 per cubic meter. 2022, we would look at 0.84 per cubic meter, and then 2023 would be 0.91 per cubic meter. And then rural customers would just see 1.7 times the rate. So then also, we would see an increase on the base fee, just just kind of outline, so in 2021, we'd go anywhere from 1750 to 151, and then increase from there. And then additional, have the current users with a 3/4 inch meter, 19 millimeter, pay the same water and sewer rates as the 5/8 inch meter users in the city of Waverne, so that would just be eliminated at a meter cost. And then we are looking to remove the landfill decommission fee and environmental fee for billing to Waverne Utility Board and North Waverne, because we just bill it as one fee. And those are our recommendations.
We have presently have the reading once in the bylaw. We are now going for a second reading. And again, we, everyone doesn't like to see rate increases, but we need to start building forward, because there are going to be some drastic, very large expenditures coming up, and it has to come out of the utility fund. And these are minor, we don't want to get caught up into that, if we want to point fingers at that moose jaw scenario where they all of a sudden had to double their rates simply because they had to do replacement. So if we move forward very slowly onto that. Go ahead, Jen. Oh, no. Go ahead.
Your Worship, I'll, I'll move that, that bylaw 2020-3409 to amend bylaw 2007-3088, the Water Works Bylaw for the city of Waverne for the purpose of increased rates be read a second time.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, just a couple of questions and, and on this, Jennifer. First of all, we, we have experienced a lot of capital put into our system because we were kind of lagging behind a little bit, and I can fully appreciate that, and, and we have to replace that fund. Just on the, on the billing part, I go back here, and just, the environmental fee, which is 475, can you tell us, does that go into a fund? Do we have to pay some of that outward, or just what does the environmental fee do for us?
So I'll answer that. Sorry, Counsel Bailey, I'll answer that question. So our environmental fee goes into our, into our reserves and goes off to pay off our recycling and things like that, back in that way. So we actually have a fee that is. The reason it's being removed is only charging it to four meters, not to every customer right now, and that's why the request is to have it removed from there, but it's going to a fund right now.
Okay, thank you. I, I just was curious on, sorry to put you on the spot, Jennifer, I didn't mean to do that, but thank you, Matthew.
You're welcome.
That, that fee's going to be removed?
It's only going to be removed from our rural customers, because right now it's only been charged four instead of to every one of the people.
Okay.
And for us, my look at it, it's not worth it for us to only charge four, then add to everyone else, we decided us to remove it that way.
Okay. Mr. Mickel?
Thank you, Worship, Jennifer, Matthew. What, what does it mean in dollars to the average water consumer of the city in Waverne, residential house? Any idea percentages for the first year of January 2021? Give me a ballpark number.
Counsel Mickel, it's about $8 per household based on the basis usage. So when we look at the 71.99, it'd be up to about $79 for that, for a single user for a month.
That's per month?
That's per month, correct, yeah.
That's for the first year?
That'd be the first year, and then after that, you'd be increasing after that as you go forward, so.
So Matthew, would this be a fair question to ask? How does Waverne put themselves with other communities this size, as far as charging people, our consumers, for the price of water? Are we competitive? Are we under, are we over, or where are we?
We're, we're very competitive compared to other municipalities, Counsel Mickel. For us, we're, we're lower than much of the other cities. This is one of the reasons we are looking at a three-year rate base increase and including the base rate increase as well. But when you look at some other municipalities, we are in, in competition with them, you know, within what they are and in the lower end of that as well.
Mr. Van Betje?
Thank you, Worship. I just want, this is our first increase since January 1st, 2016, I believe. Is that the last rate increase?
Yes, that is correct, for the water.
For the water and sewer.
The sewer was 2013.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And our water is very vitally important to our community and to every community, and we have ranked one of the top places for quality of water and purity of water, as our person, our person engineer in charge will tell us. So again, we keep continuing to upgrade and cost to upgrade our water system. So call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Mr. Chusell?
Your Worship, I'll move that bylaw 2020-3409 to amend bylaw 2007-3088, the Water Works Bylaw for the city of Waverne for the purpose of increased rates be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. The bylaw 2020-3410, sewer bylaw amendment?
It's my, I believe the first reading of this was March 2020. I got it. I got batteries too, thanks, Laura. Anyway, I'm very pleased to make a motion that bylaw number 2020-3410 to amend bylaw 2007-3089, the city of Waverne Sewer Service Bylaw for the purpose of increased rates be read a second time.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously.
Make a motion, Your Worship, that bylaw number 2020-3410 to amend bylaw number 2007-3089, the city of Waverne Sewer Service Bylaw for the purpose of increased rates be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Bylaw 2020-3411, official community plan, and this kind of will roll into also bylaw 2020-3412, the zoning bylaw. Tonight, we have, for a presentation, brief presentation, we have Megan Jones from P3A. She will give her discussion and lay out what we're talking about here.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council and administration. It's been a long time since I've been here, so we were supposed to be here in, what, April? So I'm honored that you would have me here to discuss the OCP and the zoning bylaw. I'm a planner, and I'm a consultant with P3A, representing P3A today, but James Yowk is also here, principal from P3 Architecture. And there are also three people not in the room today, not represented, and I want to make sure that, that they get recognized for their contributions to the OCP and the zoning bylaw. One of them is Ashley Beaton with Beaton Planning. She really focused on the zoning bylaw. She is our zoning guru, and she really, really did that focus on it. Dwight Mercer with DG Mercer Eco Research, he did a really thorough demographic analysis and some background analysis. And Mauricio Jimenez, and he's with Mapline Services, so he did the mapping. So I didn't want to take credit for all of the, the great content that's in there, but I wanted to make sure that we, we worked as a team and we worked together. So there were three other members that weren't here today. So thank you very much. So we're going to do a quick OCP overview, a zoning bylaw overview, OCP and zoning bylaw alignment, an engagement overview, and then the next steps. So it's been a long time since you've probably looked at this, other than in your council packages. So we want to use this as an opportunity to have an educational piece as well. So we just wanted to start with some definitions of what a review and update is. Wanted to make sure that we were clear that it was a review and an update, not a rewrite. So it was a review and update. So in terms of a review, that is a formal assessment or examination of something with the possibility or intention of instituting change, and that's if necessary. So we wanted to keep that in mind while we were doing this review. Then the update is making something more modern or up-to-date. There were a lot of pieces that were missing from provincial legislation that we wanted to make sure that were included within it to give it some teeth and give it some viability when you're going up the chain of command in order to approve and work on some of the developments. It's also an act of bringing something or someone up-to-date or an updated version of something. So I just wanted to bring those to your attention, just to, for, if you get any questions on what the review and update was to entail, we kept these definitions in mind as we were doing that. And the official community plan, just wanted to kind of tie it to the Planning and Development Act, which is the provincial policy. You've got the OCP, which are the city policies. Your master plans all tie into your OCP, so your recreation master plan, your transportation master plan, they go in and their policies and their guidelines are tied into that OCP. And the zoning bylaw, that's your city regulations. That's the teeth, that's where your implementation tool. So just a brief overview of that. So what is an official community plan? We did want to make sure we reminded you of this. The OCP is the keystone of the planning process and is essential in managing future growth and development of the community. So this is what we are bound to in the Planning and Development Act. Now, the OCP background, so it's got a bunch of comprehensive policy framework, it guides the physical, and I think we discussed this in one of our meetings, physical, environmental, economic, social, and cultural development of the municipality. And I wanted to draw your attention to the last sentence, the statements of provincial interest. One of the major updates that needed to be done to the OCP was the inclusion of the statements of provincial- statements of provincial interest. And those are all tied to the physical, environmental, economic, social, and cultural development. They have them tied directly to those pillars, and we included those within the revised OCP. So these are the things that the OCP requires. I'm not going to read them all out for you, they're on the Saskatchewan government website, but there are certain things that were required to include within an OCP, and this is what our policies need to address in each OCP. Now, these are the things that it may include. So that is usually left up to the municipality. When we discussed earlier on in the process what some of these things that we wanted to include, we had that conversation, and we included the things that you felt were necessary and important to guide your community and development. So without an OCP, the municipality has little control over development. It really has a hard time effectively managing land use. That's because when things come forward, there's really no policies and regulations in line and in place in order to guide that development. So it cannot coordinate development with services and capital planning. It becomes more difficult for your director of engineering to coordinate services and capital planning. So you cannot manage the separation of incompatible land uses, so that becomes more difficult. And it cannot protect development from locating on hazard lands. For example, the flood plain that we know of. So results of the review and update, we had a revised layout. So the layout now provides an overview of the OCP and the background of the city first, then it moves on to the policies. Before, we kind of found that it was a little bit all over the place, and that might have been the way that they were written at the time. But we tried to make sure that we had the background first, and then it gave the policies. We also reworded the policies so that they were true policies, policy statements, as opposed to just a sentence that could be interpreted a number of different ways. That said, policies typically are flexible and higher level, and your teeth become the regulations in the zoning bylaw. So we did review and revise the policies. The statements of provincial interest were approved in 2012, and all OCPs are reviewed by the province for their inclusion of these statements of provincial interest, so we call them the SPIs. And they were recently reviewed just this spring for collaboration with Indigenous, First Nation, and Aboriginal and Métis communities. That was the focus of the review this spring. When I discussed this with the provincial government a few months ago before COVID hit, they did say that these weren't expected to be instituted right away. So this isn't something that you have to worry about, that because they're not included to that level of depth, that will be in the new statements of provincial interest. Just in case you have some light reading on a Saturday night and wanted to read the statements of provincial interest, it's okay. We've got it. Oh, sorry, I'm going to go back. So we revised the policies, we revised language throughout the document, wanted to make it a little bit more current, but we also wanted to make sure that it was a bit more consistent. So we added images to make it a little bit more readable, and we revised some definitions. And the definitions were used from the provincial, the Planning and Development Act. We used them from other municipalities, but really, we looked to some of your existing documents. So the OCP, we integrated the city of Waverne existing information, so the mission statement, the objectives, and the values. And we really wanted to make sure that all of this kind of lined up. This is a board from the open house. When was that, February? Back in, back in February? So this is a board, and so we really took that alignment with the mission, the vision, the objectives, and the values. This comes from the city of Waverne mission statement, the objectives, and the values that you had provided to me at the beginning of the process. So we wanted to integrate that into the vision as well. So the table of contents, I'll go through this very quickly, but we had the introduction that gives you kind of an idea of what is an official community plan, the mission, the vision, the objectives, the integration of the OCP, community information, population projections, and land consumption. Then we got into the next section, which is regional planning and intermunicipal cooperation. We did talk to the RM of Waverne and wanted to make sure that there were some alignments there so that you're not having incompatible uses next to each other just because of boundaries. Plan, administration, and implementation, this is a very, it's a difficult section to write, but it's a very important section because it's about the implementation, the monitoring and review, the enforcement, the amendments, the authority, and council's role in the implementation of the OCP. Then we got to part two, which is the general development policies. These are policies that can be applied to many of the land uses, not necessarily all, but many of the land uses and a lot of the development opportunities that you may have moving forward. Then part three, there's the residential. We had mixed use, talked about the central business district, broke it down into industrial, neighborhood commercial, major arterial commercial, and highway commercial, just to really focus that. And then agriculture, we had a focus more on agriculture, not because you don't have the larger agricultural options or operations. Then we had parks, open space, and recreation, historic, cultural, and heritage resources, moved on to tourism and economic development, transportation, and public works. So these are headings that are quite common within communities. Now, keeping in mind that we did a review and update, so we wanted to make sure that we included all of the sections that you still had before. It wasn't a rewrite, but we did rewrite sections of it. So this is the future land use map. It is available on the website as well, because it's not all that clear up there. But future residential, this is the up-to-date one that is on the Waverne website. Then the zoning bylaw. What does it do? It divides a municipality into zoning districts and regulates the development and use of land in those districts, permits a council to set local standards for the subdivision and use of land, and helps manage the delivery of municipal services and resources to new development. So again, we don't need to go through all of the things that it is, but it's your primary legal and administrative means of implementing an OCP. And that's the policies contained within. So every regulation that we looked at, because you had an existing zoning bylaw and an existing OCP, this is where the work really took place, was taking those regulations and making sure that they tied to the OCP policies. So in existing documents that were written at two totally different times, that was challenging at times, so that's where some rewriting came into play when we were doing the OCP and the zoning bylaw. So it permits a council to set the standards for the use and subdivision of land, so that's really what it is. The results of the review and update, so again, there was a revised layout. We tried to have the layout so that it was more, it was in alignment with the OCP. We included all of the amendments. There were over 74 amendments reviewed, I think we included over 60 of them. We examined permitted and discretionary uses to make sure they were still current. We updated the ones that were not current, so permitted and discretionary uses, and we updated the definitions of key terms. Something to keep in mind is we just kept the definitions primarily in here, because if they get updated throughout the process, then we want to make sure there's only one document that you can go, you have to go to to update. There's nothing worse than having to go to four different documents and having to do a search and find. And I know we had discussed that early in the process of how important it is to have a good definition to really set the stage for a policy and a regulation. So again, started with the introduction, general provisions that apply to most things within the community. Part three goes over the development officer, the role of council, the minor variances, the validity, the exemption from a development permit. When are people actually exempt? Zoning bylaw, compliance certificate. So this is all the administrative pieces. There's home-based business permit, enforcement, again, register and fees. And then part four, regulations applicable to all land uses. So just as the OCP, we talked about all the land uses first, and then uses permitted in all zones. And then we got a little bit more specific, because this was included within the last zoning bylaw, that you really had these specified, and they were working. I worked quite closely with the administration to discuss this. So landscaping, we did, sorry, I should clarify that. We did do some revisions within that, though, within what things weren't really necessarily working. But sign regulations, intersection sightline control, accessory use regulations. Then we moved on to, again, looking at residential. We got mixed use, commercial, industrial, agriculture, so urban agriculture, special zone regulations, so that's where your parks, open space, and recreation, floodway, urban holding, contract zone, all come in. And then you've got your direct control districts, overlay zone regulations, temporary uses, nonconformities, and definitions and interpretations. So this is the zoning bylaw. Here's your zoning district map. And we did a little table to show where some alignment occurred. So up at the top, you've got the general development policies, that's also where the general provisions are, the regulations, the districts and zones, we tried to line those up as well, just to make sure that things were a little bit more in alignment. Keeping in mind that these were update and review, or review and update, so we didn't include all of those within here, but there are other sections that are applicable. So engagement overview. So we had input from the community, so resident stakeholders, RM of Waverne, Economic Development, and the Chamber, Health, Education, City Administration, City Council, Waverne Planning District. So we looked at the district plan, city of Waverne strategic plan, the economic development plan, and RM of Waverne official community plan, and the zoning bylaw. So we did use some references as well. And the key document that we use is the Planning and Development Act, to make sure. So we had a visioning session on June 10 of 2019. I can't believe it was that long ago, but we had three meetings. One was administration, one was stakeholders, and one with council. That's where we went over the visioning up on the side wall there and took a look at some definitions and key terms that we needed to include. Those, all that information was used in the development of the OCP and in the zoning bylaw. So the visioning session results were the keywords for the vision statement, definitions of keywords, listing of crucial background documents. We did ask about crucial background documents that we should look at. And then the identification of issues and opportunities for growth. So we had that mapping exercise at the end where, and that happened with administration as well and with stakeholders, issues and opportunities for growth. We want to make sure, and there was really good feedback on some of the opportunities. And we had an open house. There were 21 attendees, so there were no major concerns with the OCP or the zoning bylaw, the content. There was an opportunity for community members to see the content of the documents and ask questions. Which leads me to questions. Yes, Counselor?
Thank you, worship. Megan, I wouldn't tell you under the bus if it is, it's just a small bus. First of all, thank you, thank to you and your team for this very thorough and comprehensive report. It took a lot of work over the last year and a half or so. The question I have for you, though, I think, I know you can answer it. When is the next OCP scheduled for this area? Do you have to do it every so often?
Thank you, Counselor. You should typically do it every five to 10 years. You should do an annual review, just to look at the policies and talk to your administration, see what's working, especially after you get a new one in. You should do an annual review. But every two years for, for smaller communities is typically acceptable. But officially, five to 10 years.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Betchy?
Thank you, worship. Hello, Megan. I want to say that it made a lot more sense to me this time than it did when we did it in 2013, I'll say that much. So I've obviously learned a little bit, but I do have a question. So the RM does an OCP, and the city does an OCP, and they communicate, obviously, between the two, so residential in the city will line up with residential in the RM, like as far as zoning and light industrial and light industrial. So they're not conflicting down the road? Is that how it would work?
Thank you, Counselor. That is the intent, that is the intent. There are still opportunities for interpretation that may exist, and situations that might not perfectly align that you'll have to work with your neighbors. But that was the intention in reviewing the OCP and the zoning bylaw from the RM of Waverne.
Okay, so that's not mandated by the province that they have to align, but it's just hopefully working together with each other?
Right. That would be more of a regional plan that you're speaking of.
Right.
Yeah.
So Counsel Van Betchy, we actually have a regional plan from 2013 as well, that does that, and also we have our district planning commission that we made on a monthly basis to review as well.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Van Bailey?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a very in-depth report, and to read the 82 pages or whatever it is is a long read. You mentioned in there opportunity for growth, and I think when you were here in February, we talked a bit about that. Could you just expand a little bit on what you put into this program and how you identified needs for that opportunity for growth?
Thank you, Counselor.
Did you understand my question?
Yes, I did, yeah. Just thinking of a proper response. So thank you, Counselor. When we took a look at it for opportunities for growth, we did look at those specific sections that we had, residential, mixed use. We did have conversations throughout engagement, the engagement process with economic development and the Chamber, and they had a great opportunity to be able to provide input. So we hope that we capture that in all of the sections as well. And we really relied on a lot of input into the growth opportunities from administration, what you've been seeing and what you may be seeing. And that may have changed due to our current situation in the last few months, but...
Yeah, it certainly has, and I think what this report can do to us with maybe understanding the opportunity for growth is a basis to work from in all sectors, whether it be residential or commercial or manufacturing. And just, I guess I need to read it more to fully comprehend what that actually means and what it could mean to our, to our city, if any part of this takes off a little bit.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. I think what I would recommend then, maybe if you read it and then you have a development that comes forward, then that's when the policies really start to resonate with what it means for growth in the city. Because then that way, you've got the policies to back up your decision-making, and you've got the regulations to back up your decision-making.
Well, I totally agree. This is going to be a very positive stick for that, and I guess what I was looking for was more of an, if you had something to say, you need to do this to encourage this. And I don't know if that's your job to do it or not even, but...
I think what you'll find, Counselor, is there are some recommendations within each section and within the opening sections as well. But we have to keep it high level enough so it's not too detailed, so that if you do hit a pandemic or something does go sideways, that you have some sort of contingency, and you have it high level enough that it's not going to tie you to something that you can no longer implement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to move that the bylaw 2020-3411, the official community planning for the city of Waverne be read a first time, and further that a public hearing be held at the regular council meeting on Monday, September 14, 2020, at 5:00 p.m.
I'll second that, your worship. Questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. So our first reading is done. That, go ahead, second one. Bylaw, zoning, zoning by, the zoning by, no, I'm talking about the zoning bylaw one. Do you not read that bylaw? Yeah? Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2020-3412, the zoning bylaw for the city of Waverne be read a first time, and further that a public hearing be held at the regular council meeting on Monday, September 14, 2020, at 5:00 p.m.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Just like to thank Megan and her partners for all the, from P3A, for all the work that you've done for this. We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Bylaw 2020-3421, police commission bylaw. City Clerk, Dunnett, if you wish to speak to some?
I'm sure, I'll just give you...
Just give us the highlights of the change.
Quick, brief background. The police commission discussed, looking at the police commission bylaw, and they decided just to make a few changes to the bylaw, updated a bit. I think Counselor Van Betchu was kind of going to give you the background, so maybe I'll just turn it over to him as he's one of the members of the police commission.
Thank you. Yes, so, yeah, we just, the board of the police commissions met and we discussed and decided on a few changes, and I'll maybe just highlight the changes that we made rather than going through the whole bylaw. So the first one was, the board shall consist of the mayor and five other persons appointed annually by city council, two of whom shall be members of council, three of whom shall be other citizens of the City of Wayburn. Previously, it was the mayor and two counselors and four citizens at large, so now we've changed it to mayor and five other persons, so three of which will be citizens of the City of Wayburn. Any member who is absent from three consecutive meetings of the committee or in excess of one-third of all board meetings in a 12-month period without leave of absence from the board may cease to be a member of the board. The city council shall have the power by the firm of vote to remove any member of the board from office at any time. Four board members, at least one of which must be a member of city council, and at least one of which must be a member-at-large, shall constitute a quorum. And the board shall appoint one person of its members to be chairperson and another member to be vice-chairperson. Those are the only changes that are on the bylaw.
What was that one that was previously, the board shall appoint a person to be chair? What was the previous reading of that one?
To be honest, I don't know whether it stated...
Because I always thought that in the city act, we could appoint a vice-chair, but I always thought in the police act that the mayor was supposed to be chair.
I don't believe it's in the city's act. I think maybe it...
No, you mean the police commission act.
Yeah, I don't believe it is a recommend, I don't think it's a regulation by the police act.
The police act doesn't state that the mayor has to chair the meeting. I believe our former bylaw may have, I have to pull the old bylaw, but I believe the old bylaw may have said the mayor was the chair, but the police act actually just says the mayor has to be on the police commission.
Right. And the reason being is that, again, we've got one of the people running for candidacy in Saskatoon, and he was, he wants to be, make it back again to the mayor take control of the police board, because they found a lot of problems with it being, the mayor not being the chair of the board. So that's the amendment.
Yeah, I don't believe, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's not in the police act that states that, that it is. And I think cities vary throughout the province, I think, as to whether they are. I think in Saskatoon currently, the chair is not a police, not a council member.
And that's what they're saying, is that they're running into a lot of problems that way, Counselor. Mr. Mickle.
Thank you, Worship. Counselor Van Betchu, I don't know if it's in that bylaw, I didn't read it in detail, and I'm sure you know the answer to this. What are the terms of the members-at-large? How long?
Before we do this, we have to, before we have, so we can have discussion on this, I apologize for jumping ahead. Let's just adopt...
Make a motion?
Make a motion, then we can have everything discussed.
Thank you, Worship. I'll make that motion, that bylaw 2020-3421, a bylaw to establish board of police commissioners for the City of Wayburn be read a first time.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
No, Mr. Mickle, go ahead. By me? Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe that...
The members are appointed every year, January 1st, by the mayor and city council, and whether they're renewed or not, but they're appointed yearly. There is no defined term, I don't believe. They're just appointed every year, if I'm correct.
Okay. And in the past, we had, we had tried four members, the city-at-large, of members-at-large, and although there is, I didn't agree with the idea that we should drop off one, but the rest of the police commission did, I still think that there should be, I'm not comfortable with that. I think at this point in time, when there's more citizen overview and be calling for more citizen overview, we should just leave it at that, at that four instead of the three. But the rest of the police commission felt comfortable with that. Mr. Manbetchu.
Yeah, I was just going to add, Your Worship, yeah, that when we did meet as a board, I think that the majority of the members did agree that we would just stay the way we've been operating for the last year, which was with three members-at-large and then three members of council. It seemed to, I think we all seemed to think that it worked quite smoothly, and it's important to have people on police commission that are very engaged, and I think we're fortunate we have that now. And myself, for one, I was concerned about, if you have, it's hard enough to get three people that are very engaged from the citizens-at-large, and to get a fourth, you know, I thought was a stretch at best, that we found over the last seven or eight years, so...
I have one more question, Your Worship, Counselor Van Betchu. As you just mentioned, the people that are on the police commission, they have a value and compassion for what they're doing. In my term of office, almost 20 years, there's been one female person on the police commission that was Chairman Debbie Button when she was the mayor. I think it'd be nice to have a female's perspective in the future on the police commission to give that perspective of a female in today's society and policing and everything else in our community.
Well, I don't, certainly don't disagree, Counselor Mickle. It's all dependent on who applies and who doesn't, I guess, is the thing. So come January 1st, or I would probably say into December, November, December, that if people are interested, that they certainly contact our city clerk to put in, I guess, not an application, but whatever it's called, sorry.
And we do have forms online for people to fill in on our website that would, that you can fill out for any board or committee for the city, including police commissions. So, yeah, and I welcome those at any time, and then if a vacancy occurs, we go to that file, or always, yeah, towards the end of the year, we start to look at those positions, and appointments happen at the very first meeting in January. So if you're interested, yeah, for sure, you should be thinking about that this fall.
Thanks, Ms. Van Betchu. And I would just like to add that although, how the wording is as to who's going to be appointed as chair, the police act does say that the mayor has to be on the police commission, and there has to be two there, and so whether we say who's the chair, who is the chair, and whether we just automatically appoint the mayor as chair is neither here nor there in our, because the police act still, what do you call it, supersedes anything written in a bylaw, and so we are always going to have the mayor and two councilor members as on the board of police commission. Go ahead, any other further discussion? Seeing none, we, all in favor? Carry unanimously.
Your Worship, I'd like to also make a motion that bylaw 2020-3421, a bylaw to establish the board of police commissioners for the City of Wayburn be read a second time.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously.
Your Worship, a motion that bylaw 2020-3421, a bylaw to establish board of police commissioners for the City of Wayburn be given three readings at this meeting.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously.
Your Worship, that bylaw 2020-3421, a bylaw to establish board of police commissioners for the City of Wayburn be read a third time and passed.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion as well.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. The unfinished business, no unfinished business, new business, rural water hookup request? Go ahead.
Yeah, we have, we have received from the Wayburn Utility Board a request for residential water hookup. The owners have confirmed satisfactory sewage hauling arrangements. Administration is recommending for the following requests be approved for residential water service for Grant and Alicia Jensen, southeast 26 of 814 west of the second, lot Q, and the $10,000 connection fee does apply.
Your Worship, I'll move that the request of the Wayburn Utility Board for access to the rural pipeline for the following applicant be approved, subject to fulfilling the City of Wayburn and Utility Board residential water hookup requirements, Grant and Alicia Jensen, southeast 26814 west of the second, lot Q.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Questions and announcements?
Hi, it's Your Worship. I do have one announcement. I will be putting on the city website, it will go live possibly tonight, but first thing tomorrow morning, the election, 2020 tab, will go on the City of Wayburn website. It will contain all information to do with the election, the date, of course, which is November 9th, as well as information on other dates such as nomination timeframes, advance poll dates, mail-in dates, and other information will be on that website. This website will continue to be updated as information becomes available and will be updated on a regular basis, so do continue to check the website if you have questions. However, if the questions are not being answered on that website, you can contact me. We have an election email, and it's just election@wayburn.ca, or you can phone my office, of course, at my regular office number. Anytime, Monday to Friday, 8 to 4:30, the returning office will be open. However, nominations will not be accepted until September 22nd. The website is just being launched for people to get information and to learn about dates and make plans for figuring out ways to vote, or perhaps candidates, potential candidates that wish to run.
The, I have one question there, and I guess I'll go to Jen here. Somebody got a text tonight that, from GFL, saying that there's garbage pickup on their street, and it's not, garbage pickup was today on their area, but they got a thing from GFL. Are we getting hacked? And because then all of a sudden, the text came out, it's garbage pickup, because we don't text, we don't, and that's a question, I guess that's a question. We only send out texts for recycle pickup, not garbage pickup, right?
Yeah, GFL only handles our recycling. We do the garbage pickup internally through the city, so they shouldn't be receiving texts from GFL on garbage.
Right, and they said that it was supposed to be for, the garbage pickup was in their area, it was supposed to be for tomorrow, when today was the garbage pickup. So someone's kind of hacked into GFL's thing in sending out texts randomly.
I can't verify if somebody's actually hacked it.
I mean, all it is is that GFL doesn't send out garbage pickup. They only send out recycle pickup, right?
That would be correct, yes.
Yes, right, okay. So whoever, people are getting these texts tonight, they disregard them because GFL doesn't handle our garbage pickup.
Yeah, just follow your current garbage pickup schedule. It has not changed, so...
Right, okay.
And the same thing, if there's anything they can provide to me, and I can reach out to GFL and talk to them.
Yeah.
But they would not be sending texts out about garbage pickup because it's city that's garbage and recycling is GFL, so...
But if you want to, if you want to tell them that people are getting texts about that...
I will contact them tonight and let them know about that.
Yeah, so obviously, somebody's hacked into their system or something and sent it out onto there. The, it's also to make known to the council, I don't know the other one, we've, our rescue, all the RMs are all the way to the border now are all signed in for the rescues, rescue signups through the fire department on that, so, and those are, and we thank all the RMs and we support them, and I'm glad that they support us along the way. So that is very good to hear, and that was signed in here this week also. So that's good to see. Any other questions or announcements? No notice of motions. Our next council meeting will be, we're back to our regular schedule.
September 14th, Your Worship.
September 14th, 5:00 p.m. That'll be our next council meetings. We thank you, everyone, for their attentive watching here and attendance here tonight. And with that, we will call this meeting adjourned.